Good evening. This is a regular meeting, February 12th, of the Eastline Ad-Hoc Committee on Short-Term Rentals. Those that can, would you please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, united in the soul with liberty and justice for all.
Wait for John to take a seat.
John took your seat. That's right.
Come on down. Give you a minute there. So, before we get to public delegations, we just have an item to add to the agenda, and I'll do that by vote, which is, under item three, which is the approval of minutes, we will be needing to approve, if we can, the public hearing minutes of January 29th. So, do I have a motion to add that as item 3B to the agenda?
So moved, madam chair.
Okay, thanks. A second?
Second.
Seconded, thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed and none abstaining. Okay, great. All right, on public delegations, anyone like to take the podium this evening and speak to the committee? No? Okay, well then, moving on, we'll go to approval of minutes, and under item 3A, for the regular meeting of January 29th, '24, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Okay, Gary, moved, and a second?
Second.
Okay, a second, fine. Greg, great, thanks. And any corrections, comments on those minutes? Okay, all those, anyone?
Nope.
Okay, great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, okay. Anyone opposed? Anyone need to abstain? I think everyone was here. Okay, and item 3B, the public hearing minutes of that same date, January 29th, 2024, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'm going to approve.
Okay, Greg, and a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. Okay, great. Okay, so we're on item four, which is reports of the co-chairs and Attorney Zamarka. And the first of these is item 4A, which is, and before I start, Gary, do you have anything separate from item five that is a co-chair that you'd like to share or anything?
No.
Okay, so I'll jump in there then.
Sure.
Okay. So, under 4A, as you know, I did attend the Granicus meeting, which was the day after our public hearing. And in the context of, in going to that meeting, it was an eye-opener for sure, but one of the things that was offered was a complimentary assessment of our town's short-term rentals, meaning taking a look at the numbers for us and some basic data. So, I signed up right away, and then the following Monday, I was able to have a Zoom meeting. Mr. Mahalan also attended that for part of the time with a staff person at Granicus, who gave some basic information, and I will send the information to you separately. We had a lot of emails over the course of the last week, so I didn't want to muddy the waters anymore. But basically, in this report, the data for Eastline was very similar to what Greg had found. So this is very helpful. And that's great. And this is taken as of February. So, 171 listings were found. And again, I will email this to you, but again, in the interest of, you know, keeping our email brief. The companies were TripAdvisor, Priceline, Expedia, Airbnb, and others. So they checked five. And from what I understand, and going to that seminar previously, the week before, a lot of short-term rentals can be, are advertised on many platforms at the same time. And the approximate number of these platforms nationwide, maybe worldwide, is about 100. So there's a lot to look at. So this was a nice little cross-section, but 171 listings representing 123 rentals, if they expanded the borders of the town just slightly to capture other relevant listings, that 171 went to 182. So, just to give you an idea. And this, again, you'll get this in an email, but it's color-coded, so you can see where the concentration of them are, and you can see that they are in the north end of town as well. So it's not like there's nothing happening in the north end of town. So that was interesting to me. There's much data that they did give that was interesting. The number of short-term rentals has grown in Eastline 15% year-over-year. There's a simple bar graph. They apologize, these numbers should be reversed, but you'll also get this chart. Other data that was significant to keep in mind were, let's see, we had double-sided here, so I'm, yes, the median nightly rate of a rental in Eastline, $254. The types of units, basically, 97% of the kinds of short-term rentals physically are entire homes, and a very small sliver of them, partial homes. Same for single-family homes, 92%. So that gives you some idea. I think some other important points made here, and then at the seminar, the seminar ahead of this meeting, was just the explosion of short-term rentals everywhere. There's certain trends, however, and I think we touched upon them at the last meeting, where there's been a lot of regulation, sometimes there is that reduction in the short-term rentals. So, for example, in New York City, where you see, you know, pretty strict regulations that have been passed, then you'll see markets moving into New Jersey close by. So you'll, you know, to sort of take off the slack, as it were. Another sort of unbelievable statistic to me was that 10% of short-term rental owners voluntarily comply when you establish any kind of set of regulations. So, this gets to our point about enforcement that we've been trying to grapple with, you know, here and there, but not extensively so far. So that was eye-opening to me. And basically, across the board, this is kind of a sort of a worldwide, more national snapshot of increases in complaints, 100 platforms that make it possible, more home rentals, they outperform hotels. The market for these is better than the market for regular, you know, the regular residences. So, since 2011, 15 times the number of short-term rentals have been listed. So these are, you know, so this was a great snapshot, I think. Part of the meeting was also to give our group a little lowdown on, obviously, services that this company can provide, you know, for example, registries and related computer services. I won't get into that right now. I want you to take a look at what they sent, and then we can always discuss that at another point. But they pretty much can help you soup to nuts if you need it. So, with all the data and providing one coherent database for our various departments, so zoning, police, et cetera, so, you know. So, to listen to the pitch, I was able to get, I was able to get some basic information, which I found pretty helpful. But Gary, you were definitely in the neighborhood there, because the qualification for this number was that it's winter time, and they expect that number to be higher, you know, as the months progress. So that was that in a nutshell. Let me just see, I had one other, let's see, okay, so, yeah, so as I said, the seminar sort of laid the foundation for this, and was, again, you know, pretty eye-opening. Otherwise, under 4B, the report of Attorney Zamarka, he is not here this evening, and Anne Thurlow had conversation with him about the two questions that we had. Paul, your question about long-term rentals, and then my question was about the pre-existing non-conforming uses. So, I'm going to wait till Anne is here to really explain that, because I wasn't privy to their conversation. So, we'll let that be for now. So, any questions on some of the Granicus material or anything else, until we, before we move on to item five?
Did you include VRBO in your statement there of those?
Yeah, you know, I did not see that as, one, when they did their little analysis, I didn't see, they have an other in there, and I don't know if the other included.
It's included that, yes.
Yes.
Just, you know, the way we handle it, we are not on multiple ones.
Right, okay.
Because people book at the same time or the same day.
Yes, okay.
It'd be confusing. So I would guess those numbers would be pretty close. Most people won't be on two, I don't.
Yeah. That was a surprising thing, unless in more touristy spots or something, I don't know. But that was interesting, that in the seminar, the point was made that owners, STR owners, are becoming a little more savvy about listing in multiple ways and not relying on one single platform. So, but it might be for certain markets that, you know, are not apparent, are not existing here, I'm not sure. Yeah, Greg?
So, when you said they said the short-term rental's growing 15% a year over year, how far back did they go?
They just did, they just went that one. They just said between last year and this year.
Okay. So they didn't go pre-pandemic and then pandemic?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, they can do that analysis.
That would be a really interesting number to see.
Yes.
Year by year, as you go through the pandemic.
Yes. Interesting to find out, too, how it affects conventional hotels, motels, and what those prices are, and things like that, that, you know, if you're trying to deal with some of those issues as well, and not lose conventional, you know, ways of staying within a town.
All right.
Okay, so, again, I'll forward that to you, and then on your, you know, on your computers, you can, you know, you can blow up this picture, it'll be a lot easier to see, you know, but we can pass it around if you'd like for now. Okay, so, item five, the title of this is "Co-Chair's Recommendation," just Gary and I, "to Prepare a Status Report to the Board of Selectmen Detailing the Committee's Findings and Deliberations Ahead of the Decision in WIBBY." So, Gary, I'm going to let you take the lead on this, because the term "status report" was Gary's idea, so, you know, go ahead, and if you want to explain your thoughts here.
So my thought process was, we need to see where our court is going on this case, WIBBY, if it's going to be a narrow decision, or if it's going to be a broad decision, and what issues they're going to tackle, and which issues they don't have to tackle in order to render a decision in WIBBY. Who knows what they're going to do? Are they going to say, are they going to address the issue of, do property owners have a constitutional right to rent their home for any period of time? They could, I don't know. And if they do that, then that will be something that we should know before we make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. It was my impression that we have a new Board of Selectmen. We should probably, and we've been doing this for several months now, we've had a few public hearings, we've researched quite a bit of things, have many deliberations, we should probably get them up to speed on what we're doing without making a recommendation. That way, they have an idea, and they can put that on their back burner, and then when WIBBY's decided, we can come back and see how WIBBY impacts Eastline. So my idea was to give them a status report. I believe, really, it's kind of what, we kind of separated the topics before, and Anne, I think you told me.
Yes.
You have a document?
Yeah, I did a little outline, which I passed out, and we'll come back to this in greater detail when we're doing 5B, but this kind of dovetails on what Gary was speaking about, and this is just my list. If I were to sit down and write the whole status report, what it would address or summarize, and it doesn't have to be terribly long. I mean, I imagine, I know we've had tons of information, lots and lots of documents, but I think, you know, in a roughly 10-page-plus document, I think we can summarize, so that it's a useful, it's useful material for the Board of Selectmen, and so they can get the lay of the land, and we'll, as I said, we'll come back to each of these, and my thought tonight under 5B was to have, take a moment, have you all read this, and then we could add to it, take away from it, whatever. But I like Gary's idea about the status report of not being married to a certain recommendation at this point. It doesn't, and in writing this, too, it's very hard not to even give a soft recommendation when you're not recommending. I mean, it's, you're going to naturally gravitate and say, "Well, if we're going to regulate, as you, as Greg and Gary have researched, here are the top five things," you know. So it's not going to be recommendation-less, you know, that's just not realistic, but, you know, but I tried when I was writing my own, the noise ordinance and the parking, to just write it without recommendations, so it's a little dry. But you're still gravitating one way or another, you know, or you're pointing out things that you want hint, hint, should be corrected. Okay. So, but I see your point that we're at that junction where we have lots of information. We need to digest it, because if we don't, and let's say this committee were to take a vacation from being a committee, I think it'd be really hard to sort of gear up again, and then go back and review all the information that we've learned and acquired, and then write something. So I'm of a mind, okay, we're here, we've got lots of info, let's pass on what we have, and we'll direct you, but we're not going to give you a total recommendation at this point. And this is kind of consistent with Attorney Zamarka's recent comment to me about, you know, even when he did his report, he didn't want it to be, which you recall from January 29th, he didn't want it to be final, for a lot of reasons. He's got to do more research, and then, plus WIBBY's out there moving. So, just a thought.
So we do have, we have several components of a status report.
Right, right.
Let's see, so it looks like Gary, Faruja, and Greg McCarver, you wrote something about comparison of permits for short-term rentals.
Right.
So, you know, this is a document that is part of, a component of a status report. Can we have, Anne, you did this one?
Yes.
Anne did one on existing laws that address noise and parking concerns, so another component. I did one on the discussion of current laws in Eastline, and my conclusion was basically, we need a little more fact-finding, we need to see what WIBBY says, and I think we need a little input from beach communities, beach community presidents, governments, agencies, that type of thing, so we have an idea of what the beach communities are looking to do. Because I did go through the, I did go through the, oh, we have this.
And we have one, I believe this is from Anne Thurlow, her name's not on it, but I believe this, because her topic was zoning directed, and it was, where best to have short-term rentals, and then the issue of, or to do it through zoning, not, and then the other issue was pre-existing non-conforming uses. So, she wrote something that kind of.
So my issue with the beach towns is, and more, I did review the various beach community zoning laws, and it really looks like just Black Point, kind of, they define short-term rentals, and they have, they limit it to no less than seven days. No other beach community did that. There was a recommendation from, Gary, I think from yours, that said, "We recommend no less than seven days in their bylaws," but it was just a recommendation, it wasn't an actual zoning law?
That might have been Crescent Beach.
Hold on.
Yeah.
No, that was Oak Grove Beach.
Oh, it was, oh, that's right. Sorry, it was Oak Grove.
Yeah, the board there.
It's in your bylaws, but not, you don't have zoning, but it's in.
Oak Grove, right.
Right, we go with the town zoning, but we have bylaws, and in the bylaws, they recommend.
Yes, and it says recommend.
It says recommend, yeah.
Yes.
Aswagachi Hills, Saunders Point, they mentioned rentals of two weeks or less, and they said those people cannot use amenities. So, we really need to have an idea of how a town ordinance or zoning regs are going to interact with these beach communities. So I don't know if we need input from these folks, I don't know, you guys live in these areas, are there people and boards?
So I'm the current president of the Giants Neck.
Right.
Beach Association, and wear that, one of those hats here, along with my other hat, as being a participant in a short-term rental. Our zoning regulations have not been updated for 20-some-odd years, and we just hired a zoning enforcement officer, and are beginning the process of a top-to-bottom review of the regulations. And similar to what I think Black Point just speech did, I think they just completed that same process, and I imagine we're going to be probably using some of the same language.
Right.
Because it applies, and why reinvent the wheel?
It's done, right.
But we're going to take a look at it. At each of the meetings that I've chaired, the Board of Governors meetings, since this committee began last August, I've made this committee a portion of my report. Basic updates, keep everybody apprised of its meeting, when a public hearing is, that kind of thing. No real detail, no one has asked me to expand on that, or, "Listen, I have a concern," or, "Boy, do I hate that," or, you know, "Let me know when the time is."
Right.
I did get one contact from the president of the Heights Association, and, you know, wanted to kind of work together in the beginning, but since then, there's been a number of people here representing Giants Neck Heights during the public hearing, so that's from, you know, I can continue to keep that updated. I like your idea about letting the Board of Selectmen know where we are. I don't know, we want to give them all this stuff, because that's probably going to confuse them without some correlation of it, but certainly giving them an idea of, you know, what we're looking at, where we are, what are the topics we're concerned about.
Right.
Then we figure it out. I handed out my report.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I did an email, there's another copy for the gentleman next to you there. So, if you're going to go over it, we can go over it whenever you're ready, but that's the report regarding the registration for tax purposes and things.
And Gary, what you said about the beach communities, I think that's a great idea. The ones that have their own zoning, because if we do anything, it's going to be either zoning or ordinance, or a combination of both. And we really haven't heard from the people in the communities where the zoning exists, whether they would feel more protected or more intimidated by an ordinance, as opposed to a zoning regulation, which they can then do their own.
Right, yeah, we just need some input as to.
Yes, that's maybe less.
We need to work together.
Yeah, maybe that's less random than someone having, you know, happens, who happens to come from one of those communities at a public hearing, or emails one of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
And Saunders Point and Aswagachi Hills is not a separate zoning entity.
Right, right. I saw that.
But I think all of the beach towns have organizations. I know John can speak to Black Point, Oak Grove Beach has a board and a president.
Mm-hmm.
Crescent Beach, I'm sure, has the same structure, you know, but, so all of those people can be accessed and ask for their professional opinion as president of the associations or chairperson, or whatever they call themselves.
I think it's a good idea just to, for the, just to make a record that they've been consulted, and that they've been, had an opportunity to tell us what their ideas and thoughts and concerns are. Because we don't want to make a recommendation, and six months later, they come saying, "No one ever told me." So I think we need to do that.
And it would be similar to the way we handled it on the town side, where we had the zoning officer, and we had the building officer, and official, and rather, and fire marshal, police chief, it's the same thing. I guess it would be, and it's hard to say, but it would be up to those zoning, those communities, but they could try to capture more public opinion. I noticed that with Crescent Beach, when I look at their website, they'll often put in that we're having a meeting, or that we're having a public hearing, so that, I don't know if we've gotten more folks from there to write letters, because I haven't, you know, matched a person with beach community yet. But definitely, that might be something to think about, that those governing bodies may want to somehow try to capture a little bit, you know, if they put it on their agenda, and there's some sort of a hearing there, then that may, and then we gather information without going through a survey. Surveys are, you know, they take time and money to do properly, and, but you could at least open up the floor at one of your meetings and get some. I did notice, speaking of that, at your, you know, Black Point, there was something, I read the minutes of those meetings leading up to all your changes, and there wasn't too much about short-term rentals, it was kind of briefly discussed, and also, and I think the feeling was, well, we'll see what the town's going to do. So that was the one comment that stuck in my head.
Well, we have our, the zoning, as Paul mentioned, our zoning rules were, you know, quite old, and we had them, you know, professionally, you know, done to bring up the current standards, and they're, you know, and they were, and they're quite extensive and extremely well-done. And we have our own zoning board, and they spent, you know, probably almost a year, I guess, Brooke on that, right? About a year on it. And the, you know, frankly, short-term rentals was not a, you know, big concern, because we've had a, you know, we've always had in there, in our regulations, about seven days minimum rental periods, and obviously, people rent their homes and stuff, so, and the, but, you know, and I, as chairman, had put it on our agenda a couple times, and we've addressed it at the board meeting, but we've not had, you know, any, you know, any, you know, real complaints or concerns about it, frankly. The, you know, it's come up a couple times, and it's been, frankly, been discussed in light of, you know, what's happened in Oak Grove, you know, and, you know, so there are, you know, obviously, we're a small community, and there's people that live at Oak Grove that we know, and vice versa, so, and it's come up there, and, you know, concern is, you know, what if that were to occur here? We currently don't, you know, we have, at least that I can remember, we've only had one or two, you know, limited issues, and I'm not sure, you know, was 100% related to short-term rentals, we couldn't verify that, you know, but I can say that at our meetings, which we do allow public comment, that, you know, that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe the public has commented when we've opened it up about short-term rentals, and I have had it on our agenda, you know, and I do inform the people, you know, briefly during our, you know, monthly meetings about it, so.
Okay.
And so from that point of view, it's a, and it will continue to stay on our agenda. and it will continue to stay on our agenda, you know, so we can, you know, bring this committee's recommendations back. But our, we do recognize that it is our zoning, but like as Gary put in his excellent done memo here, you know, it's the same situation as a town. It's not allowed in the town, but how do you how do you enforce it? And we have that same situation at Black Point. It's not, you know, if somebody does do a short-term rental, how do we enforce? What do we do? So that's the, you know, that's some of the concern very candidly. I assume that's a similar concern that we have now because clearly if these things are not allowed, you know, we are, you know, the town is either just ignoring it or has the same problem we do at Black Point. You know, how do, you know, what do we do to enforce it? And economics come into that and, you know, a sense of fairness too, so. Anyway, that's where, you know, but I have not, you know, but I would also, you know, you know, recommend that anybody looking at updated zoning regulations, you know, to feel free to look at Black Point. It's really done, very professionally done by one of the, you know, really grandfathers of our zoning in the state of Connecticut. And matter of fact, he's recently been also hired as his CEO for Crescent Beach too. So the last few months, so.
And did the new regs keep the seven-day minimum? They did?
Yes.
I don't think there was even any discussion about it because there's still no issues, so.
Right.
That's interesting.
No, probably, yeah, right.
Yeah. That brings us to the definition. I have to just get this in so I don't forget.
Can I ask a question first?
The definition. Go ahead.
So Paul's going to hate me for this, but I think a vehicle for assessing the individual associations would be the beach association that you've mentioned that you're trying to get back together.
The Council of Beaches.
The Council of Beaches.
Actually, I wrote a note to convene a meeting of the beach presidents when you described that, so. I think that fell apart when Mary Cahill retired. She was the one driving that all together, but it would make sense to bring everybody together to have a conversation about it. Might generate some interest.
I did talk to Mary about that within the last month, actually. She thought that was an excellent idea. Obviously, she's
So so would you want to get the.
difficult to attend. It'll be soon be 101, but.
The presidents of the associations or do you want just the normal? Because I know in Oak Grove Beach, Pam Stevens was the representative to the beach council and she's not the president of Oak Grove Beach.
No, I mean, just a representative, I guess, is fine to bring information back and forth. I think that's.
Okay.
Did you did you mean here at at our meeting or through the council?
And then Paul, I trust Paul to bring the.
That's fine.
To bring the right answer back.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, they don't have to necessarily appear here.
Right.
Yeah, I'll see if I can. Do you have that information? The list of the contacts for each beach association? Maybe you can get that to me and I'll put a letter out and see what.
Thank you.
Well, I've discussed this with Mary a few times over the past six months and the and she indicated that the, you know, the gathering of all beach communities into a social member, they usually gather when they had an issue and the, you know.
I think sewers was the big one the last time.
Right, exactly, exactly. So I think this, you know, this category, Paul's into that. So I think Paul's idea is an excellent idea and I endorse it.
That's, you know, the use of people's property, that's a significant issue.
And that's probably where a lot of the short-term rentals are located. People have been doing it for decades, I'm sure.
And that's why we need to include them. Right, exactly. Hundred percent. Right?
And you at least allow a version of short-term rental by virtue of your zoning regulation.
Right.
This is, you know, that is different than what we have on town side. You know, we have a closest thing might be bed and breakfast and that's it.
It is different. Yeah, I think that, you know, the weekly rentals has been a, you know, commonplace for
Forever.
two hundred years and we're three hundred years long we've been here. So I think that's relatively common. I think the issue.
And that's important to acknowledge, absolutely.
You know, the issue here is the ones from, you know, a week down, you know, that's.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Great. So that'll be very helpful to us and we'll pick up with that again when we do five B here. We're still on five A. And in terms of pieces of information for for a draft, you know, status report, Paul, would you like to go over this?
I'm happy to if that fits into your.
Yes, it does because absolutely. Yeah, I had some questions, you know, about the assessors memo to us and how we how we might best deal with that.
Well, I did I did use the assessors memo here and some of the other information that we've got. I just.
Okay.
Briefly, you have my report is about two and a half pages and then the back section are actual copies of the assessors annual income expense report.
Okay.
And so I'll get to that. If you want me to just go over it quickly.
Yeah, yeah, please. That's that's great. And that's important because it's an item that I threw in there in my outline, you know, assessment issues.
I started it as a, obviously a draft and I brought into community goals brought forth for discussion. That is not brought forth by us but by other other organizations within the community and this is just a quick and simple overview of some of the improvements that have been asked to occur in the Nyanic Village and Flanders Village specifically. Having to do with the Yale Charrette, mostly in Nyanic, managing the summer seasonal turds increase. Improve pedestrian access and safety by slowing traffic, creating increased off-main street parking. Manage annual summer season tourism, increase public rest areas, a gathering space. They're thinking of doing something with the property near where the Dominion Building, the police building was, and then adding more seasonal staff and and police officers. As you may or may not know, our population almost doubles in East Line for the summertime.
Is it all?
Back even when I was first elected, two thousand and seven to fifteen. And groups, many groups are working on this. I called out Nyanic Main Street and others, trying to bring more visitors and town residents to downtown Nyanic to enjoy things like the Playhouse, the Chilgen Museum, the Marina District. Nyanic Inn is the only hotel there. Boardwalk, retail shops, restaurants. Flanders Village renovation has to do with the highway district development. Costco, there's a number of future site pads that are the master plan approved up there in that vacant area where the driving range used to be. Improve business traffic and flow, pedestrian access from Flanders Four Corners all the way to the stop and shop area. New apartment complexes up and back and improve safety for the interchanges. And I note that I included that information just as a way to point out that short-term rentals and tourism have played a significant part in the development of East Line for decades. The pandemic drove housebound people to increase use of the internet to help manage their daily lives. New and improved online apps were developed and allowed for easier and faster access to all goods and services, including these short-term rentals. Prior to this, most rentals were in shoreline communities made available on a limited basis to help supplement homeowner income and rented mostly by people living in Indian, Connecticut. Many beach associations are made up of second homes that are owned by these folks for this purpose. I have a picture when I grew up in Cheshire of my parents taking me to Shea Brook Shore for vacation in a small rented cottage over on the beach over sixty years ago. The increase in interest in STRs driven by these websites and new technology have led, as you pointed out, into the increase in rentals and availability. There are growing concerns from communities and residents about the behaviors of these renters, especially along the shore. This committee has suggested information should be gathered about these rentals to help community leaders obtain a greater awareness of issues that need attention and for neighbors to be able to peacefully enjoy their neighborhoods. Longer-term rentals, either academic, generally academic rentals that are eight or so months, usually in the off-season, keeping the homes available for short-term rentals or for owner occupation occupation or fully year-round rentals have long supported communities across our country here in Connecticut, East Line. As they are less transient than STRs, they're not drawing the same attention, but a footnote I didn't add here is that I personally have more problems with long-term rentals than I've ever had with short-term rentals. My quick review of the zoning regs have not found any mention of long-term rentals nor short-term. However, there's a mention of bed and breakfasts, duplex and other businesses permitted use in the residential zones.
Mortuaries, right?
Mortuary, you can have a mortuary, yeah. The town assessor's website lists a variety of forms required to be filled out describing various and specific uses. Most that when filled out are evaluated for the purpose of generating tax revenue for the town. Two in particular state Connecticut general statute twelve dash sixty-three C and D, which requires that these forms be filled out annually by quote, "all owners of rental real property" to file these report, though the expenses, end quote again, shall not be a public record and is not subject to FOI in the Connecticut general statutes. Both forms are headed as annual income and expense report, although one seems geared toward apartment and lease rentals where the other seems specific to hotel and motel properties and is a bit less involved than the previous. So I refer to the hotel motel form. It's as it would seem to me to be a way to achieve many of this committee's stated objectives as to registering and tracking short-term rentals as a permitted but controlled use in East Line. The form requires all the committee's suggestions that we've talked about regarding ownership information, the general data and configuration of the space and rooms to be rented, as well as occupancy and revenue expense, revenue and expense data. There's no fee associated with filing of this form. I guess they cover that with increased taxes. Now, this seems to be all the necessary data that we'd need to track short-term rental uses in town and we could achieve our objectives with slight modifications to the form. In conclusion, there are current zoning regulations and town ordinances in addition to these forms I just mentioned that exist in town. And if given a bit more attention, I believe could adequately be used to track short-term rentals. I believe this combination will be though a long way to increasing awareness and the control of the behaviors of short-term rentals while keeping all the benefits that short-term rentals bring to the town, its residences and businesses. Neighborhoods will benefit knowing that with support of Town Hall, their way of life will not be negatively impacted whether they will be supported as will our growing population and tax base. A lot of that we've discussed here, but if you just turn to these two forms, I've made copies of them. The first one is the and it's dated twenty twenty-two. I didn't worry about the dates. I assume they're they're the same. The first one, I believe, should be the hotel motel one. It says twenty twenty-two income and tax and underneath the town assessors heading. And it says this requirement to report, but if you turn and look at the listing of the information on the next page, it gives the property name, address, telephone number, the room configurations, numbers of room, the annual occupancy, annual daily rate, percentage of annual occupancy, goes into all kinds of stuff that perhaps we wouldn't need, but then it talks about costs and expenses, fixed operating costs, income, et cetera. So it pretty much has the information that this committee is looking to try to gather in one place. And again, a modification of that be necessary. The next form is the one that I fill out for my long-term rentals and my, I filled this out with regard to my short-term rental. This this lists all the apartment rent schedules, the leasing rent schedules. It talks about your income and expenses throughout. And the assessor uses this to create a value of which she bases her tax. And at the end, there's a verification of this purchase price must be when you originally get it. So this one, I think, is a little bit more involved. I don't know that it's what we're really looking for, but I think a combination of what we've been talking about in this, you know, takes care of the fee because the fee would be most likely achieved by an increase in tax revenue. And then we could work on particular specifics with regard to inspections. Do we need just a fire inspector to make sure it's safe or, you know, you want a building inspector and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So I my charge was to really look at that the assessors list, right, of what's going on. So I fill this out every year for my rentals, probably because it's, you know, I have an LLC that handles those rentals and that's probably where I'm found, the Secretary of State's office. I think in terms of compliance, your point about fifteen percent comply. Let's just say we decide what to do, we give it to the Board of Selectmen and they say that's great and they implement it. I'm not sure how we get the names of all of the people unless somebody goes through the websites of all of those apps that you talked about and kind of picks their name out of a hat and then sends something to them. I think your fifteen percent compliance rate probably is a front, you know, a front page of the region newspaper article about this is what happened, this is what you got to do if you own a short-term rental, please call here. You'll probably get those folks that do that, but it'll be difficult no matter what. And then the other part of it is does this in and of itself solve all of the problems that we're going to have? Does a permit or a registration solve all of the problems that we're trying to solve in in Greg's community, you know, without some modification of ordinance, without some modification of the zoning regulations and without, you know, the neighborhood willing, you know, to make a phone call and say, this is what we have. Then must provide the police with a meter that's adequate enough to track noise and, you know, or abide by his comment about the standard being the police officer's hearing a large noise, he can make, he or she can make that call. So I think there's a lot more to it. I think Gary's memo that he wrote about not changing current laws talks about the fact that how do you, how do we blend this into the fabric of ordinances and regulations that already exist? And I think that's going to be the challenge at the end of the day, but but this is a simple tool that will, I think, get us started and I don't think it will negatively impact people too much that are renting short-term rentals because if you, you know, if you're someone that's been renting out one or two weeks a year for twenty years, you know, you're not going to be, you know, you're not going to find any appreciated value here to be cumbersome toward you, you know, but if you have a large corporation with a number of homes, then you're going to find yourself in a situation where you might pay more in assessed value.
So a question, yeah.
So that's the quick and dirty.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Thank you. That was great. A question I have and it's similar to zoning versus ordinance issue. It's assessor, assessor issue, which is if the assessor starts to and and takes action based upon the memo that we got last last meeting, which is that these short-term rentals are of a commercial nature, their personal property should be taxed. If that happens, because I understand it's not really happening right now, is that similar to, let's say that just is given the green light by Board of Selectmen or something, is that the same as this issue of where we have an ordinance and we just try to regulate and try to have a, you know, a system of of registration or something? And are both of those things at odds again with the town zoning, which doesn't really allow anything other than the B and Bs? You know, if you, it's your point, it's your point that you made in your memo, which is we're going to allow them to regulate them, you know, so I sort of see the same issue, but I I haven't had this discussion with the assessor.
But if I may, I think the implication here is that you fill out this form and the assessor's going to send you a tax bill based on, is that what happens or is she just?
That's what happens. She she is assuming that if you are following Connecticut general statute twelve sixty-three, which requires all owners of rental property annually file this report.
Right, but then do you send her a check along with that report?
No, no, I I not with this report.
Yeah, so it's really just it's. Yeah, so it's really just, it's
It just increases.
She's just trying to assess the value of the property.
Right.
She's not actually
Right.
filing a tax charge on it.
She does assess, and if the assessment is higher, then that's in effect filing a tax charge.
Correct, but it's not taxes on the income you made, it's directly.
No, taxes on the income go to the rep, the internal revenue.
Yeah, that's in, it's in the state.
So, or the state, so.
Yeah.
So I think what's interesting is that she's making the assumption that there are rental properties, because she has this form and we all fill it out, but the zoning regulations need to be updated to include, if I'm wrong, that long-term rentals aren't included in zoning regulations as well as short-term, that there has to be some kind of adjustment to that, which, which should be easy enough.
So, you know, Mulholland's contention that it's not a permitted activity, but he doesn't do anything until somebody complains. It's sort of like, you know, Chicken Little, the sky is falling. If I don't see it, it's not a problem, you know? I, I don't, I think it's, it's on the edge of ridiculous because we all know that there have been short-term rentals, as you've said, for decades in this town, whether they're permitted or not. So, again, zoning has been completely ineffectual in regulating any kind of rentals, short-term or otherwise.
But I think to Ann's point, they have to kind of, they have to be in sync. Whether, whether they're being enforced or whatever, there has to be, there has to be references within, you know, the assessor is assuming that this is what's happening, the zoning is gonna have to, you know, allow for the use. Bed and breakfast is allowed in each of those residential zones. And it's not much different because they're limited on, what, up to eleven rooms or something? I forget what the exact number was.
Yeah, I think it's seven or something.
You know, and then the ordinances have to do with parking and noise. So the combination of those, I think, is, is what we're looking at.
I mean.
Gonna be effectual, you know, otherwise it's.
Yeah, I mean, definitely over the, we, we've, we've made this assertion, I think it's correct, that over the last number of years, you know, the, the world of bed and breakfast has changed, you know, and, and we're dealing with a, a different entity in STRs, you know, whether it's.
Right.
And that brings me to a definition. I just don't want to forget this, but Granicus did provide a basic definition that it seems to, that it has said, it seems to be generally accepted, which is under thirty days.
Which is what?
Under thirty days, something, you know, a rental, under thirty days. And usually advertised on a platform such as Airbnb, Verbo, whatever. So one of the many one hundred platforms that that can be utilized these days. So that was its two-pronged, you know, two parts of its definition.
So, you know, a lot of this has got to do with the fact that what you mentioned a few meetings ago, societal change, right? We have now Ubers instead of taxi cabs and cell phones instead of payphones. So now we have, we have apps going on, right, to, to do this. And the seven days from the zoning regulations in Black Point probably come from the fact that in those days, everybody went on vacation for seven days, it was Saturday to Saturday or Sunday to Sunday. You know, you packed up the kids, you got two weekends out of it, they went back to school. Now I think our lifestyles are a little bit different, so I'm not sure that the seven day is probably indicative of what everybody takes for vacation. They leave Thursday night, they come back Sunday night, and, you know, they got soccer, Little League, and lacrosse, and band concerts, and all of those things, so.
Yeah, and given WIBBIE, I don't think, I would be really hesitant to, to limit the length of stay.
Yeah.
I, I, I really, really think that the court's gonna come back and say, if you own property, you have the right to rent it for any length of time.
I, I disagree with that.
Really?
I don't think any court would say, you have a constitutional right to rent your house for two hours. Because that's the slope, that's the slippery slope.
That is, that is, and so I don't know where you draw the line, you know, to say.
Very difficult.
You say twenty-four hours, you do a day, or do you say
Right.
four hours, a time to have a meal and see ya, or is it?
The court in WIBBIE said, is it twenty-nine days, is it ten days? It's, if you, it's right, it's tough, it's.
It's arbitrary.
It's arbitrary. It really is, right. Right, so, but that's not, we don't, I don't know, it's a difficult.
That's why I think being specific to East Line, you know, the fact that we have nine beach associations. There's not a lot of towns, I don't think, that have nine beach associations, so, you know, most of them self-govern, some have gone as far as having their own zoning. But I don't know how enforceable that is. We just had a zoning enforcement officer, Giant Snack, hired a couple of months ago, you know, I mean, there's nobody there before that, so. It was kind of self-policed is what I'm gathering. I haven't been there that long, so I can't give you the thirty-year history, but, you know, we have no parking on the street, for example. And the reason I'm told there's no parking on the street with Giant Snack is because they don't want people coming in, parking, going to the beach. If they park on the street, they're assuming that they don't have a piece of property that they know or live at, you know, to park their car, so no parking on the street. So even with, you have a carpenter or a plumber or somebody come, you know, if you park on the street, eventually somebody hears about it, you know, what they're doing parking on the street. So you gotta pull that in, but that's kind of a self-policing thing that happens, which we can't do townwide, but just as an example of how the beach association seems to work from my limited experience.
And we, I've made this point a couple of times, we, we definitely still have in the community neighborhoods that have restrictive covenants that run with the land, and no matter what you do or say, you're not going to change that. So that, that reminds me that in Pine Grove, we had a gentleman from Pine Grove at the, at the hearing who talked about that. So that could be something that, if we speak to the president there, you know, we could probably get some information on that, but that there are restricted covenants there not to, not to rent out and not, you know, we're not to have short-term rentals or whatever, or conduct some other business activity. There's a lot of those. If you, if you look at some of the covenants, the language is old, and so it'll just talk about, you know, not conducting a business on the property, you know, but it's not specific to STR, so, but, but nevertheless, it's definitely, you know, there's, it's definitely a quilt of, you know, of, that we're presented with here. And I think the more we can, as Paul said, you know, and, and the, the more that we can tailor and solutions to what the real problems are, at the same time looking down the road, because it's really hard to have foresight, you know, what will this look like? And I think Dan Beechey, when he was here last meeting before last, made the point, how do we know this is going to, you know, continue in perpetuity that we're gonna have short-term rentals? It may be some other form of something, or more motels, hotels will come to town, so.
But that's, that's the benefit of the way our country works, right? That we can make some recommendations to
Right.
a higher level board, and they can then implement those, and that will be through another public hearing and another set of conversations, and whatever gets implemented is effective October first of the following year, or however upon publication. And then four years later, there's a new board that comes in and they say, geez, you know, this problem is working. Let's look at the zoning regulations or the ordinances, and what were they thinking then? And so it goes to legislative intent about what was happening, and the minutes then of whatever those meetings were become almost as important as the the crafting of the ordinance or the regulation and the verbiage there. So, because if you're not quite getting it from there, you can go to legislative intent and say, this is what they meant, and then changes then can be made, and that's what kind of keeps us going, I think.
And you can't capture everything. I mean, no regulation, you know, you're gonna have things within that. If the regulation is this, you're gonna have something out here and something out here, and you just cannot capture all of it, you know, at any one given time, so you have to understand that. Okay, so we have information about the assessor, so.
I have one little question. You guys are all beach folks. I'm trying to get a vision of what's, you said, Paul, you made a comment that the population of the town nearly doubles in the, in the, in the summertime. Where are these, this extra population living? Where, I mean, where are they residing? I mean, is, are there empty homes all summer or second home? Is that what's going on?
There's, there's a lot of rented homes like that. People come in, a lot of people own second homes that they fill up, a lot, a lot of people, there's, used to be seven or eight hotels at the end of the, you know, by the highway.
Okay.
What goes on, but it was a problem for, you know, police patrols, you know? Again, when I, when I was there, it was, we had requests from Giant Snack Heights and Giant Snack Beach long before I lived there, to run the police cars through the neighborhood, you know, instead of hiring security guards to, to sit there or drive through and, and the cars. I don't know how you, you guys.
It's a discussion where it's, it's a discussion we're having on the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, it's, it's a stress point on town services, because, you know, and that was a time we, we ran out of water. We had to turn the water off, you know, when water levels got low due to hot, dry weather, so. So there were a lot of implications of the increased population.
But Gary's question is germane, I mean, where do they go? If you drive through Black Point right now, I would wager fifty percent of the houses are empty or more.
It's about, the last survey they did was, you know, again, it's just, only about twenty percent of the people responded, but you know, the last twenty years is probably going from thirty percent occupancy to probably forty-five, I would guess.
In, in the winter, yeah. Into the summer, all those houses will be full.
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, so just a lot of empty houses in winter.
Okay, so that makes your answer. Okay. All righty. Okay, so, I think I'll move on to five B, which is a discussion and determination of other topics, other sections of a status report that we'd like to see, so that's this, and we can use this outline. If you want to take a minute to take a look at it, we can go ahead if you haven't read through it yet. We'll take a minute. And nothing's written in stone, just, just some thoughts. And there might be an introduction and conclusion, too. I just want to get to the meat of it. So what I did try to do is go back to the agendas we had, just take a look at our, our handy webpage, which is actually, I have to say, it does help because it's a place where the public can go and just take a look at what we've done from start to finish, from when we, you know, started and end of summer to where we are now. And these are kind of, these are the topics, these are the topics we've covered, and I think are the most meaty things that, that we've discussed, researched, whatever. And I did add Gary's suggestion in number seven, which is to be determined the information from the beach communities. But just a thought, and it, it, you know, in terms of flow, I tried to start, if I were to sit down and write the paper, write the draft, write the report, you know, sort of, begin at the beginning. We had a charge, what was that charge? Without going into grand detail, again, the webpage will be a major, you know, link for, for everyone to take a look at. And just to, again, it's for our benefit as well as the Board of Selectmen's benefit, I think.
Right.
Because as we're, you know, narrowing, narrowing possibilities and getting more information about, like, number three, what is the framework of all of this? We've got the beaches, we've got the town, we've got other neighborhoods, we've got existing law, we have the assessor's office. What does all this look like? And then we've got WIBBIE hanging out there. We've got plenty of public opinion so far. I, I would love to see even more, but we definitely have a good, you know, reasonable amount of that, I'd say, for sure, through the hearings, the public delegations, the emails. We've heard from department heads, et cetera. We've come up with some goals. What are they? Gary and Greg have, have narrowed the world of regulation, you know, whether we, it goes via ordinance or goes by way of zoning, things that we, that are concerning. And then we have, you know, we've, we've looked at some other Connecticut municipalities.
I think as I was doing the research on the other towns.
Yes.
I was struck by what Lime did at the front. They went the zoning regulation route, and they had a set of guiding principles. I think they called them intentions.
Yes.
But it spoke to the rights of the owner, owners, the renters, the other residents, and I thought it was just a terrific statement of,
Yes.
this is our mission, this is what we're trying to achieve.
And I saw that you put that in your, yes, I thought that was very good because it goes to goals and, you know, and they have, and they've, they've done it well with, you know, with this, with their zoning, so, yeah, so that would be a good, a good one to remember. It's in your, it's in there, for sure.
So, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
If we say this list is acceptable, how can we help you put this together?
Okay, so I talked to Gary about that, and, you know, I don't mind doing, like, you know, a good amount of the writing based upon what has been provided, because I think it's hard to just say, okay, you write this section, you write that section, and all eight of us, and, you know, it becomes difficult, and I, I was mentioning.
I thought we were gonna have Dan Beech do that, since he wasn't here.
Yeah, he's gonna get, he's gonna get proofreading our responsibilities, for sure. But again, for American Rescue Plan, I was telling Gary that, that we, we had eight weeks. We had a deadline to, to survey the community, survey the department heads, write a report, and I, there were eight people, you know, on that committee, and it, and it was going to be very difficult to, you know, assign a section and then just try to pull it together. So it's just easier for one or two people to write and then hand out that draft, and then comments come in, and then you can, you can, you know, have fun highlighting and crossing out and doing whatever. But just sort of, yeah, sort of one scribe, I think, kind of, kind of.
You have, you have a number of things here that are complete already. I mean, the charges, the definition, you know,
Exactly.
Mr. Zamarka could put together the framework, you know, the framework, but the legal questions and those kind of things.
Right, right. And we actually, I mean, that's something that we're all familiar with because we do have, we've asked him a number of questions, we've gotten, you know, we've gotten answers, but we know that they are sort of not finalized, and they might be somewhat partial based upon everything else, like this little puzzle coming together. So, but, but we still have some outstanding legal questions, you know, for sure. And then, like, key reading materials. I was just curious because, you know, we've had so many things, but I think it would be great to boil, boil down a little bit. If there are items that you've read that you think, okay, a selectman should really be reading that or that first or something, so I'll just ta, I'll, I'll start at the bottom, maybe move up a tad, but is there, is there anything that you've read that you say, okay, this I go back to all the time? I'm always going, using this as a resource.
So I think the Southeast, the SOCCG.
Oh, yes, the COGS, yes, I, I agree with you.
That would be high on my list.
It's always, it's kind of always with me, yeah, it's definitely, okay, so, so.
The, the thing is, those, that board has so much on their plate.
Yes.
With so much going on, I think to overload them with a bunch of reading material that they may or may not want, it'll be a pile somewhere on their desk. If they want to ask us, hey, where, where do you find this? You know, I mean, we got that big pile, we're able to do it, and
Yeah.
Dan is, you know, he goes to the COG meetings once a month, so.
Yes, but I'm just saying, I'm thinking. But I'm just saying, I'm thinking that in the body of it, there would be, there's the direct links to things or reference to things. But just like, a reference somewhere that we have the webpage, that's got every agenda, the minutes, the videos, and it has a lot of materials. But if there's a few key, I was just thinking about a few key things, because this, I don't know, the COG, especially when it's updated, this kind of put us on, put me on the planet with what's happening within the community, the chart in here. So I think just a couple of things for quick, you know, to, so that was a good one, you know. I agree with you, Paul, though. I mean, you don't, that's the whole idea of actually number twelve, is not to give them, you know, this stack and another stack and, you know, this kind of thing.
Include it in a footnote.
Yeah.
If they want, like you said, a link to, if they want to look at it.
Yeah.
They got a lot of stuff.
Yeah, they, I mean, exactly. But, and that's actually, it's in, I'm sure that's on our website, you know. It's repeatedly on our webpage. But just, just a list of them. This would be, this would be a listing of, like, top three to five items that if you want to understand what's happening. And that list will change over time, too, because things are being updated. There is, there's a new seminar every, every which way you turn.
I think in the document that Gary and I put together, we listed three references. One was the COG, one was the Granicus, I think, and the other was the San Antonio.
Yeah, we've seen that a couple of times. Is the Texas article? I've seen that reference.
Yeah, I can't remember the title of it, but I think that was the third.
And the Granicus one, do you know which one? Because now they, oh my god, they sent me, they sent us, like, five, six things already. Yeah.
It was the original one that we, that we.
Oh, the original film, video we saw?
No, no, there's a, there's a Granicus.
Oh, do we have that one?
In paper.
Um, it's, is it the one that Dan Beechey used or a different one?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay, all right, we'll have to figure out. Dan, right, it was, you know, having you look at goals and all that.
Right.
That's a thought. Just a couple of things.
Really, what we're giving them is suggestions.
Yes, that's all it is. Yeah.
Even recommendation. We made disagree amongst ourselves, some of the suggestions. But they'll still find their way up to them for them to debate and commit, right? So if we have a summary page on, for example, what I just did, a paragraph.
Right, right.
You can access this by going to the accessory of finding out this, this, and this.
Right.
Something that you talked about, some of the key points. And, you know, this is, this is a great combination of what's happening in the area for them to, you know, they'd probably be interested in that.
Right.
You condense all those down.
Yes.
Present it along with these other things that, you know, WIBLY and.
Right. And that one is a simple, the staff at Supreme Court, you know, usually provide like a precis, a little summary of the decision and it, and what the questions are before the court. It's not relied upon, you know, hundred percent, but it's well-used.
It's a good overview.
It's a good overview. So without us having to go back, do all of that legwork on what's the facts of the case and so forth, so this is accurate, you know.
Right.
So that's easy enough.
Like Paul said, a lot of these topics, we've discussed and we've already written things about these.
Yes, so you can just.
It's really synthesizing it into one, one document.
Okay.
That's what you're volunteering to do?
Yes, that's, yes. It's okay. I mean, I, I'm, you know, I don't mind doing it. I don't mind.
I'll make a motion that Ann wants to.
I have to abstain from the vote.
She has a lot of free nights, apparently.
Can we get an opportunity to edit and?
Yes, absolutely. That's the whole idea.
Well, I think also, you know, you don't have to wait for, to send out something for us to edit. If you have a question, you want to talk to somebody, to bounce an idea off somebody, certainly you have your co-chair. And the rest of us would be more than happy to do that as well.
Yeah, I mean, if I've got questions, sure, yeah, I'm not gonna, right, exactly, we can, we can. But, yeah, basically to synthesize what we have and.
You know, if I could just.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
If you maybe schedule the time to be on the Board of Selectmen's agenda in the coming weeks. You know, they're starting budgets, I would imagine, pretty soon, so they're not gonna be, want to filled up with other stuff. Just to not bring them all this stuff, but just to say, have a conversation. This is what we've talked about. This is, you know, of all the things we've decided to do something and not ban. And to this and that, and those will be part of our recommendations. What are you guys hearing? What do you think? What should we include in a report to you that might be helpful? Maybe, you know, Candace has been here, Roseanne has been here.
Yes, we've had, right.
So, you know, perhaps they have some ideas that'll help guide us in the final report. And I don't think we're gonna get it done by March, to your point. We may wanna.
We may, it may extend a couple of weeks. But you're right, that's a thought to go and tell them what we're doing. If they, they'll have a meeting in another week or so, right?
But just here, to date, this is where we are.
Right, right.
It's been six months or seven months, whatever it's been.
Right.
And, you know.
But before that is, before the, the status report is finalized, get them to, to direct us, if they need to direct us. Or maybe they're just sitting on, you know, waiting to hear what we have to say.
Or make suggestions. I think we have to have a public hearing by charge of our recommendations. I thought, I remember that, when you put the recommendations.
Well, we had, as long as we had two public hearings, at least two, one at the beginning of the process, one as we head to, to final recommendations, but we're not there. I mean, we did the two, we did two public hearings, that second one for kind of a different purpose, you're right. So, I would say that after this happens and before a final, which I imagine is gonna be months, because of WIBI. I looked at that and I, and Gary, you can check too, but I looked at the Supreme Court docket and I was.
Right, it's not on there.
And it's not on there for, it's not been assigned for.
February was the last.
Arguing. Yes, I think it's in the sixth term, which goes through March. And, yeah, I'm just not, I'm not seeing it yet, you know.
But you've decided to go forward ahead of that decision.
Yes, yes. I mean, whatever we can gather, call it a status report. And again, we'll call it, kind of like light appetizers, light recommendation. We're not really coming at the Board of Selectmen with any, you know, this is what we, you know, see as the best, best path forward. We have more information and probably more questions than we have total recommendations. But there are things I think we can eliminate. And by virtue of our questions, I think we're recommending things, you know, as well, so.
I like Paul's idea of someone going to the Board of Selectmen. Tell them, this is kind of what we're doing. Do you folks have any questions? Because we don't want to present something to them and it doesn't address their question. So getting their questions answered and addressed in our status report would be a good idea. Otherwise, otherwise it's kind of missing an opportunity.
And when I did see, Roseanne Hardy, Ms. Hardy, who's a member of the Board of Selectmen, did ask, is there, you know, do you wanna, do you wanna do a little mini presentation? I mean, yeah, and I said, well, we're kind of in the middle of this writing of a paper. So, but I, I think, you're right, I think we can do a brief, you know, two-minute update and then, are there any questions? Yes.
Read. You're not.
Don't forget to ask for more money.
Say it again.
Said, don't forget to ask for more money.
They doubled, they doubled yourself.
That's right, okay. That's right.
I didn't notice, sorry.
Okay, so that, I think that works. Okay.
All right.
So, all right, so, and this is open to, again, this was just going through the agendas and in my mind what we've covered. But it is not, it's not meant to be exhaustive, but it was meant to be the highlights of things. So.
I think this is an excellent outline, actually.
Oh, thanks.
So, just, I don't think I would, I don't see any changes.
Okay. We'll add a kind of ladder hook headline here, or interrupt and a conclusion to, okay. All right, so that's good. So I guess scheduling a future meeting for us, so I guess, how do you want to work this? Let's see where we are. We are.
Are we going to do as Gary suggested and put together the Lyme intentions? Something that represent what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think.
A mission statement of sorts might be a good idea.
So maybe we kind of, where we have the number eight on this, again, it's not necessarily in the perfect order here, but committee goals to date, and then maybe that's where we, where we, that will be a good place to have some discussion about, yeah, sort of, eleven goals, like a mission statement, yes.
Yeah, just a statement of purpose, what we're trying to achieve.
Okay. So.
So I think there are two questions. One is, when's, when do you think you can get on a Board of Selectmen meeting? And two, when do we need to get back together?
Okay, yes, exactly. So we actually, so we are in February. So Board of Selectmen met on the seventh, the first, and third, right, Gary, first and third. The twenty-first would be their next meeting, which I could ask, I could ask to just, you know, just briefly appear there and get, and get a read about what their concerns are and what their needs are. And then.
Could you do that just in public delegation?
Probably best to do it.
Be on the agenda?
As an agenda item.
I got you.
I, I think, yeah, because.
They wouldn't be able to respond back and forth in public delegation.
Yes, that's right, yes, exactly.
The agenda item will have it on the agenda, so if the public is interested in it, they find out that we talked about it without being on the agenda.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah.
Less openness.
Okay, so, so I'll, I'll contact whomever for that, okay. Because it's only the twelfth, so we have time.
Do you have those minutes?
No. Sandy Anderson.
Who?
Sandy Anderson.
Oh, does she?
Yes. And so for us, so let's say, let's say, you know, they, they're, you know, this, these kind of topics are, you know, within their purview right now, they're in their, in their heads, and maybe something else. And so meanwhile, I'm writing, right, pulling things together, okay. And then when should we, when should we meet again? When would you like to have this draft? Knowing that I'm gonna see the Selectmen, and Gary, you're welcome to join me on the twenty-first.
Sure. Twenty, twenty-first?
Twenty-first, Wednesday, the twenty-first.
Oh, Wednesday. Wednesday.
First and third, right, one, two, three. So that should be, that should be correct. So. How about Monday, the fourth of March? Does that, that seems to be sufficient time, I would think.
Works for me, that's good.
Some, like, honor before the fourth.
If you don't get on the twenty-first, because that could be a budget presentation or something.
Yeah, it could be something else.
Then they'll be on the sixth of March.
Yes.
In which case, the fourth might give us an opportunity to line out what Gary's talked about as far as a mission statement.
Right, right. Which is easy to, that's easy to incorporate in something else that I've written or not written or whatever. Okay, perfect.
Because we want to do something in the meantime, between now and then, to help.
Yeah, and I think, exactly.
Here's an extra pencil.
It's the twelfth. I know, it's the twelfth. I mean, you know, and if it seems like some of this can be bifurcated in some way, and I can circulate half of it or something, you know what I mean? That knowing we're headed for these other issues, then that's another way of doing it, you know, so I don't have to do it all at once, you know.
So Paul, you're saying the fourth might be too early, is what I'm hearing?
No, I think it might be, it might be okay.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because I'm not sure, if you get on the twenty-first, then you'll have feedback. If you don't.
And we can still.
You might be able to be helpful in providing, you know, information.
By then, you'll get something from me, you know, for sure, because before then, I mean, I would think.
They're also meeting on the twenty-eighth, with a special meeting.
Who is?
Board of Selectmen.
Oh, what's the special, the special meeting is probably the budget, if that's probably the budget.
Yeah, so maybe that's a budget presentation.
No, actually, it says Brookside Farm.
Oh.
Oh, it's.
Well, maybe that's their, yeah, it might be their, their budget.
It's an open space purchase.
So, I, I have, I'm on a high school scholarship committee. It's the same night.
The same night, okay.
So, I mean, if you don't want me here, that's fine, and I, I.
Which night?
The same night, the fourth.
The fourth?
Right.
That's not good for you?
I have another me, uh, committee.
Do you want to, I mean, we could still meet in two weeks, and what I have, I'll have, you know what I'm saying? That's fine. How about the twenty-sixth?
March, February?
Uh, February. It's the twelfth. How about in two weeks? And what, you know, what I can provide before then, I will, but meanwhile, we'll work on this other issue of statement of purpose. And who knows whatever else is happening.
You could, you could pass some of these items out to Attorney Zamarca to put together the charge, the STR definition.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
WIBLY, you know, or WIBI or whatever.
Yeah, those.
You know, he could put all those together, the town department information.
Yeah. Speaking of Attorney Zamarca, something I forgot to mention is that on February twenty-third, he's going to, the federal bar is having a presentation about short-term rentals. So he's going to that. In fact, he's, when he talked, he did send me an email about recommendation versus status report. And he said, when you do do your recommendations, you know, his office, he, whatever, would be reviewing and commenting. So that's, again, so that's a process, you know, that's, again, that's down the road. But, but just keep, keep that in mind, that he continues to acquire more information and more updating, whether it's about WIBI or, or something else that's happening nationally that helps us. So.
The twenty-sixth week, that's the day I get back from South Florida, so that might be an issue.
For you to, to cover for minutes? Okay. How about, how about the next day, twenty-seventh? Because I don't know what's going on in town. Is it a planning night?
No.
It might be a water and sewer night. But we can meet in the other room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, twenty-seventh?
About, yeah, the twenty-seventh is Tuesday.
Okay.
It's water and sewer, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But that's, yeah, so we could, how about the other conference room, anything yet? No?
That's only gonna be.
That's the only thing on, so we're, so that's good, yeah.
Twenty-second.
Okay. So we'll put, we'll put STR at seven P M, conference room, okay.
Just that's it. I'll have the automated response that's in the agenda. It can't just occur and then appear.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, perfect. And I'll, I'll check in with her, sure. Okay, thanks. But you'll be back on the twenty-seventh, right?
Oh, yeah, yes. I'll be back twenty-sixth, if she's back.
Yes, yes, exactly. You want to make sure of it. Okay, so I think that's good. Any, any member comments, committee member comments? We're on number seven of our.
Greg and I did this report, but it sounds like we're stepping away from being on the ground and more up at the ten thousand foot level.
A little bit, yeah. So I can take what you've written, minus like the direct recommendations, but work with everything else, you know, that the example that you're drawing from is helpful. Your overall impressions of, of, you know, permitting systems. Yeah, I think that's all gonna stand. It just, your conclusions about A or B or C may not, but everything else, the guts of it will still be, yeah, incorporated, yeah. That's good. I know, okay, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so any other comments?
My question, maybe.
Yes, go ahead.
At, at, at some point, do you think we need to engage the zoning board? Because if there's no zoning, this is not allowed at all under our current regulations. If, you know, any recommendation we would make at all, I think there's, you know, I mean, right now, we'd be making a recommendation that's contrary to our existing zoning here, because, you know, what we found out at this point is that nothing is allowed and that we're all, everything's non-conforming at this particular time. And our only enforcement action would be like a cease and desist from our Z E O. Couldn't enforce, you know, such. from our Z E O, could, you know, enforce, you know, situations which actually could help, could grow a situation currently, if they would do it, but the, uh, but I think that, you know, at some point, we should be asking them either to come to our meeting, we should go to their meeting, you know, because I think you have to get off of step one before you get to step two.
Right.
Because we're not, you know, anything we put in would be contrary to what they're doing.
I think at, at this point, it's, it would be more informative, and, um, yeah, we could let them know. This was actually, uh, Roseanne, uh, Hardy's question to me, did I want to go in front of zoning and give them a little update, so, um, I-
Given that Ann Thurlow is chair of the commission?
Yes.
It seems redundant, but nonetheless, I guess it isn't.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, I, I, right, yes.
I think what zoning is gonna need to do is, is, at some point, whether it's because of us or in spite of us, they have to address the lack of-
Yes.
Mentioning in the regulations of our short-term rentals, and you can't just say, it's not allowed, you know, it's-
Long-term rentals, too.
Yeah, I mean-
It just, it just happens, right, I mean, the, the neon signs are not allowed in East Line, but you see, you know, you drive by any store and, and you see, so I think this is a bigger issue, so-
Yeah, they, they'll have to-
My suggestion would be to look at the regulations and say, can you add a phrase, or a paragraph, or a word in certain applications of the regulation that would either allow or disallow, whatever the way you wanna go, short-term rentals, or, um, and then put a list together of where those would be, uh, you know?
Wouldn't that be like our committee, one of our committee charges, is to, if we say, we're gonna handle this with zoning regulations, and we recommend here, here, and here, that the-
I, I think that would be certainly helpful to them, and certainly make our case a little bit stronger, because I, I really believe it's gonna be both, ordinances and zoning, I, I don't know. Mark wants to do, the Attorney Zemarka wants to do the whole thing on ordinance, but I think he misses a lot of things if, if you do that. And especially with the assessor assuming that this is happening, and you're gonna get taxed on it, right? And there has to be-
That's, that's, that's-
You'd almost have a constitutional case against the assessor for taxing you on something that's not allowed, right?
That's my question earlier, that you have to be careful of that, if you start, um, taking in, that was my question earlier, and I just, you know,
But I think you're right, that's exactly what I said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Liggard is, is something that's worth looking at, um, because they went the ordinance route, but the ordinance sunsetted after two years, so they passed an ordinance in twenty-two, it sunsetted in twenty-four, and they replaced it with zoning regulations, so I don't know why they did that, but-
Mm-hmm, that would be interesting to figure out, what was the exact thinking, what had, what was taken care of in those two years that they needed to take care of and then move on to zoning?
Right.
So interesting, yeah, but, um-
Is there any, um, one other consideration that's, you know, been coming to my mind as I've thought about this from week to week? One of our big problems here is, you know, is, um, well, not problems, but concerns, you know, we have some concerns and specific issues that brought us all here, and the, um, you know, at some point, we have to figure out some kind of enforcement action, whether it be a cease and desist orders, if you can have zoning, you can do that through an ordinance, you can do that, you can do that through fines, and, you know, and, you know, et cetera, so they could build up, so there'd be some kind of teeth to this. And, um, then of course, you know, what kind of ordinance could you write that would have teeth in it that, you know, you know, would be like a bl- a blight rule, or some property becomes, you know, a, a problem, you know, like their particular situation? You know, I believe a lot of these problems are because, you know, related to landlords, frankly. You know, the person who's administrating, it could be a management company, it could be a landlord, whoever's administering these STRs, you know, um, you know, you know, that, that could be causing a lot of problems, 'cause it's just like a nuisance or a blight rule where the people are neglecting the properties, or if you're neglecting, you know, who you put into these properties, you know? You know, the, um, it's, you know, at some point, I, you know, again, I'm just trying to think, whatever we do, likes of thought to go into, you know, how do you enforce that?
Yeah.
And, you know, and you can do it through zoning and, and cease and desist there, or you can do an ordinance and also have a cease and desist and a fine attached to it.
Fines, yes.
But there's gotta be something, you know, to make the few, you know, you know, potentially, um, you know, bad apples in a barrel occasionally, you know, uh, you know, what can they do to improve their oversight of their own properties? So I, I don't know the answer to that, I'm just throwing that out, it's, you know, one of these considerations, and whatever we do, we, we don't wanna put, recommend something that goes counter to, if we were to, you know, again, I'm in favor of the, what Paul has done here, totally with the assessment issues, but if we don't do that along with changing the zoning, you're kinda like, you know, you're violating-
Yes.
One, one department town is, is recognizing it, and the other isn't.
And then you have no legs to stand on, with the zoning, yes.
Definitely stands, though, with any enforcement, so.
So that, that could be in number nine on the outline of, you know, where you might, if you, if you expand, let's say you expand the bed and breakfast concept, then where, where would these be allowed, assuming you have a certain definition of them? What, how might they be regulated, as you guys worked on, and, and how do you accomplish that, and including enforcement? You know, that's all part of that, how do you get that, how do you get it done? You know, how do you get it really done, and, um, how do you pay for it? That's, that's another issue, I'll have to make a presentation before the Board of Finance, too. Um, okay, so I think we have a, we have enough to work with, okay, and, um, all right, so I think, I think we're good, so we could adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
And have a, have a good evening and a safe, safe tomorrow within the storm, thanks.